All right, I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to call to order the Hudson Town Council meeting for May 5th at 6:00 PM. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stadler?
Here.
Councilmember Knoll?
Here.
Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Mestus?
Here.
Councilmember Hammack?
Here.
Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Mayor Harges?
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda?
There is not.
It's time for citizens comments. Anybody wishing to address the council on anything that's not already on the agenda set for public hearing may do so at this time. You have three minutes. Is there anybody online wishing to address the council? Does not appear to be. All right, work session.
Thank you. Want to take an opportunity to get updated on where we're at with the project. And we have representatives from ALO online. So I will give a quick update. ALO is going to give a little bit of a presentation. If Nate Wolowitz from the state joins us, he can chime in and then we'll be able to take any questions from the audience or from the elected officials. So anyway, real quick history, as you guys know, during November 2016, Hudson residents approved a ballot initiative to allow them to go out on their own and seek broadband. This is something that was around the state. A lot of municipalities did the exact same thing, but that's kind of what you set you up to get you here. In 2017, the citizens of Hudson formed a broadband committee. The committee's objective was to develop an understanding of the broadband technology available, apply for planning grants if they could, and make a recommendation to the Hudson Town Council. As time moved on in 2018, that citizens broadband committee disbanded. But at that point in time is when you hired your new administrator of me and gave me direction to continue pursuing broadband. In 2019, the town of Hudson issued our introductory broadband initiative report. We talked about some of the details and pros and cons of viable approaches to broadband. And then the town began to budget money for broadband for reports, consultants, so on. Last year, HR Green produced a broadband report dealing with potential project costs and alignments. We issued an RFP for broadband public-private partnership. And then we applied for Department of Local Affairs broadband grant. We were awarded that grant for $731,000 and change. The town budgets matching amount for a total of 1.4 million to design and build out the broadband backbone within Hudson. And at this time, we enter into negotiations with ALO Communications to design, build, operate, and maintain the system. How are we paying for this? As you know, in 2018, Hudson annexed the Excel Power Plant. That increased your property tax revenue considerably. This revenue started coming in in 2020. In 2020, Hudson saw an increase in oil and gas development in town, and that added about another 1.3 million in property tax. So the revenue from the oil and gas, we know that's going to diminish quickly. But Hudson took those funds to match them to the Dole grant. And as you know, this will come from the Property Tax Special Revenue Fund, which allows for capital projects, including debt service on those projects if necessary. But Hudson is not taking out a loan. We owe no interest. This is all cash. In 2020, why ALO? I'm not going to get in-depth on ALO. They're here to represent themselves. So this is kind of a view from the town side. In 2020, Hudson, as I mentioned, issued a request for proposals for broadband public-private partnership. ALO was one of the respondents. Their proposal was to design and build, but it quickly became apparent that they could operate the system as well. And so that's where our discussions with them came. Nobody else had the background and the ability that they had. And that was including Rog and CenturyLink. We didn't even get responses from places like that. Having one entity to design, build, and operate the system, we feel is the quickest way to get the bugs out of the system and get a well-produced product to the citizens. ALO Communications is telecommunications. They offer broadband telephone, television. They're out of Nebraska, and they work in Nebraska and Colorado. ALO's parent company is NellNet, which has a $2.2 or $2.3 billion market cap. So they are well-funded on their end. It gives them some flexibility and liquidity. ALO is operating broadband in Breckenridge and Fort Morgan. We've had extensive conversations with both those communities. They have spoken very highly of professionalism and customer responsiveness of ALO, specifically in Fort Morgan, as they changed providers and have gotten good results with ALO. ALO has a history of successfully working with small towns. I visited a small town in Nebraska, as I reported to you, got good feedback there. And then they do have, plan to have a physical storefront presence in Hudson, but I'll let them get into some of those things. Talking about the outline of the agreement we've been working on. I'm not going to get deep in the weeds. I want to give you guys kind of an overview of what we're looking at. Hudson and ALO Communications do not have any agreements in place right now. All the work that we've been doing for months with them, it's basically been done on a handshake and good faith. As you guys know, when we needed to get into the grant application process, we needed a detailed budget and some build-out information. We couldn't do that on our own. We worked with ALO. ALO provided that. Those are services they usually get paid to provide. They did it with us in good faith. So they have so far been a very good partner to work with. How this will work is Hudson and the state of Colorado will pay for the backbone, its design and construction. ALO will design the backbone and manage its construction, but working through us. Technically, the town will contract with people, but ALO is going to oversee it. Hudson will own the backbone. ALO will lease the backbone and maintain it. ALO will own the equipment necessary to use the backbone, that last mile drops, other stuff like that. Hudson will receive a very small amount of revenue off of a pre-existing tax that the town had in place, that was put in place in 1986 for telephone exchanges, but it also covers this. So we'll see a little bit of revenue, not a bunch. But there will be no new taxes to build or underwrite this project. From the tax base, the town should be done. That's what we're aiming for. Hudson will allow ALO to use the land around the town's wastewater plant to stage. We have acres out there, so we have plenty for them to use. The lease will be for 20 years with the potential of two additional 10-year renewals. The renewal is based on compliance with the requirements of the agreements and compliance with applicable federal, state, and local laws. If Hudson decides to sell the backbone, ALO gets right of first refusal. If ALO leaves the agreement, they will not remove or deactivate any equipment. We can lease it from them, or we can request that they sell the equipment to Hudson. So no matter what happens, there shouldn't be any discontinuation of service, even if ALO for some reason goes away. We should be able to continue the service. The future. The goal is to not use taxes to expand the backbone. So any new development, any new annexation, anything like that, future annexations will require the developer to install extensions of the broadband backbone into their developments, just like the town requires water and sewer infrastructure. So that's how we feel that in the future, the tax dollars should not be used for this. It should be development dollars. So that's all I have from my end. I'm going to turn this over to ALO and let them do their thing. And Dave, you want to start?
Absolutely. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Oh, great. Thank you, Guy. Hello, everyone. Everyone in Hudson, it is good to virtually meet you. One of these days, very soon, we will get to meet you all in person, but we want to be, of course, respectful of the COVID guidelines. So we appreciate this opportunity. Before we go into our brief presentation, I thought we'll go around the screen here and we'll let the ALO team introduce themselves. So Allison, we'll start with you. You all circle around and then come back to me, and we'll do it that way. All right?
Sounds great. Can you guys hear me? Just to make sure before I start talking? Good. Good evening. My name is Allison O'Neil. Thanks for having us. And I'm the Vice President of Customer Operations, so I lead our customer service teams and our technical support group. So for you guys, it will be the people that you're talking to or your residents will be talking to as we are installing or serving the residents of your community. I'll pass it over to Todd.
Good evening. I'm Todd Hayne, Director of Plan Operations. I head up the construction teams. I work very closely with Al Schroder. He'll introduce himself next, as well as the training team at ALO. Go ahead, Al.
Thanks, Todd. I'm Al Schroder. I'm over the design and critical infrastructure teams here at ALO. And basically, our teams put together the design for the community, and we're excited to have this opportunity. So with that, I'll pass it off to Nate.
Good evening, Nate. My name is Dave Burden. I'm our Chief Financial Officer, primarily head up our finance and accounting roles, as well as our project management office and our data analytics teams. I look forward to working with you all for a very, very long time to come. Back to you, Dave.
Thanks, Nate. And I'm Dave Miller. I'm Director of Ethical Engagement. Part of my role is to reach out to new communities, to understand the community, to help the community understand who ALO is, and really work on developing that long-term relationship. So we're going to sort of tag-team this a little bit. Tonight, we've got some slides. It'll give you a history of ALO. And then at the end, we're more than happy to answer any questions. So let me share my screen. I'll hit share. And somebody give me a thumbs up if that, if you're seeing. Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Todd. So again, we're really excited to partner, bring our fiber network to Hudson. Let me give you a little bit of background about who ALO is. We've been around for quite a while. We were founded in 2003 in Imperial, Nebraska, which is actually located much closer to you all than some of us are in Lincoln currently. But Imperial was essentially on the Nebraska-Colorado border, a little community of about 2,000. And Guy had mentioned that he had visited there already, so he's a little familiar with Imperial. But we were founded in 2003 and built our first fiber community in Scotts Bluff, Nebraska, two years later in 2005. So to sum that up, who is ALO? We are a competitive fiber-to-the-premise provider, which means we offer, we often say, when we come into a community, if we lay one inch of fiber, we're going to make sure fiber passes every resident, business, and government entity, as well as schools. And so we bring a ubiquitous city fiber network. And again, we come to compete because competition is good for us, good for the community. And currently, we're serving 12 communities. 10 of those are in Nebraska, and two of those are in Colorado, which Guy mentioned, Fort Morgan and Breckenridge. And we have announced six new markets starting here in this year, and I've got a map on the next slide that will address that. And one of the reasons that we are able to expand, not just in Nebraska, but certainly in Colorado, is because of our investment partners. As Guy mentioned, NellNet, which some of you, if you've had student loans, or if you've had maybe kids or grandkids that have student loans, you're familiar with who NellNet is, as the student loan service provider. And then in October, we partnered with SDC Capital Partners, which has essentially infused ALO with additional capital that has given us the opportunity to expand. So currently, we pass in excess of 400,000 of Nebraska's population. It's roughly 20% because our population here in Nebraska is 2 million, and we're looking over the next several years to do something very similar in Colorado. So this gives you an idea of the communities that we currently serve. And I know it's kind of small for you to see all of the communities, but the ones that have the asterisks beside them, you'll notice that Hudson is on there. And so these are the ones that are planned for 2021. We have the ones listed in Nebraska, but Hudson is right there along with Greeley as far as Colorado is concerned. One of the things that I love talking about, and it's what drew me to ALO, because prior to working at ALO, I actually am a ordained minister. And this right here is what intrigued me most about ALO. We have four core values that are the heart and soul of everything we do and say, how we interact with one another, with communities, with our customers. And those are our four core values. Our culture at ALO is centered on our four core values, and those are to be honest, to be exceptional, to be local, and hassle-free. And Allison will talk a little bit more about these, but essentially, to be honest, you know, we speak the truth, and you'll see that, how we do that in our fair and very competitive, no pricing gimmicks. We'll talk about that. Our exceptional core value is lived out in our customer service. We'll talk about some of the awards that we have received. Our local core value, though, is one that I think most communities appreciate, because to me, our local core value is all about relationships and developing a long-term relationship with the communities that we serve. One of the things that we do in all of our communities is, you know, we participate in working with nonprofits, volunteer organizations, charity organizations, because our goal is to really make a difference in the community and get to know the community by becoming part of the community for the long term. Our fourth core value is to be hassle-free, and that essentially is the golden rule. You know, we want to treat others the way we want to be treated, again, whether that's across the board with our associates, with our customers, of course, with the communities, with vendors, with all of the relationships that we have. This gives you an overall view, a little more view of who we are. We have in excess of 600 employees to date, and we're continuing to grow. And we currently serve in excess of 90,000 customers across our residential and business lines. This current communities shows you that we serve communities that range in population from 1,500 up to 290,000. And of course, Lincoln is our largest community at 290,000. And there's a community in Nebraska called Bridgeport that is about 1,500 as well. So you can see the broad range there. I mentioned the exceptional core value and some of the accolades and awards we've received. I've listed those here. Most recently, we were recognized by highspeedinternet.com, and you can actually Google this to verify it, but we were given the award of the number-one most consistent network in Nebraska. Actually, I should say the Midwest. That's my mistake. And then PC Magazine has rated us in the top 10 of fastest internet service providers, along as a national ranking of being in the top 10 of fastest internet service providers. So we're extremely excited about that, grateful to having an exceptional team that helps us deliver on those. So what are the packages or offerings that we have? And Guy referenced this. ALO is what is called a triple-play provider, which means we offer fiber internet, phone, and TV. And on the internet side, we have three offerings. Our standard offering is the 500 megabits by 500 megabits. One thing about fiber that is unique and cutting-edge is that you will get a symmetrical speed, meaning you'll have the same download as upload speed. And so our standard offering is 500 megabits. We also offer a gig, which is 1,000 megabits. And then more economical is our 50 by 50 megabits. But as Allison will talk probably in more detail, within that, you know, we included a Wi-Fi 6 router, which is the latest, greatest router on the market. We have free installation. We don't do contracts, which is kind of unique, because our motivation is we want to win the customers' trust every single day. And so we're motivated to go above and beyond by providing exceptional service. So again, we have fiber internet, phone, and TV. Local stations are provided in each community. And then also, we have a full suite of business services and solution, a hosted, complete hosted PBX system. We are AWS, Amazon Web Service providers as well as Azure, so we can offer, you know, cloud-based by partnering with them. And if you all have more specifics when we're finished, we can talk about that as well. The last piece that I want to share in my piece that I'm really personally passionate about is ALO is participating in the emergency broadband benefit, which you may have read about. The FCC announced a $3.2 billion initiative to essentially help low-income and anyone affected by COVID through loss of income by helping them cover their internet bill, offering $50 a month for eligible households. And this goes live next week, May 12. So the reason I even mention this is because hopefully it gives you, again, more of an idea of who we are as ALO and the culture that we have at ALO by, again, wanting to make a difference in the communities we serve by really, in this case, helping to close the digital divide. So I'm going to turn it over to Todd right now, because one of the questions that you all may have is what will the construction piece look like? So Todd, if you would.
Sure. I think we should maybe pause and see if the ladies and gentlemen of council have any questions for Dave before we get too far into this.
Nothing here.
Hearing none, we will press on. We'll be faster and funnier. As Guy mentioned already, we've been engaged closely with Hudson. Al and his team have done just a fantastic job of completing the design, and we are rapidly moving into a construction-ready phase for Hudson. And we are hoping to begin construction as soon as we get the documents signed and maybe a few weeks' lead time to get the materials in market. If we can go to slide 10. Just a broad overview. In Hudson, there's going to be a combination of aerial work, which will be in the telecommunications space on the pole, as well as underground work, with the majority of that cable and pipe being put in through the directional bore process, which is that photo up in the upper right-hand side. Once the pipes are in the ground, the strand and the cable are on the poles, we'll pull in cable through that pipe, and then ALO teams will come through and splice the fibers all the way back to a central office. And then we will test it to make sure everything is good. I know Guy mentioned in his presentation that we want to have no bugs, no ramp-up time. We can assure you that after our process is complete, you will be ready for installation as soon as that is done. And we pride ourselves in not having a ramp-up time or any bugs. We want to deliver a top-rate service right out of the gates. If you can head to the next slide there. You might have seen trailers like that somewhere along the interstate or possibly in town in Hudson. That's a splice trailer. And there's, all of our splice fiber is ribbonized, and you're looking at ribbon fibers on the right-hand side. And each one of those ribbons has 12 fibers that are about the size of a human hair, so really small. And we'll go to one more slide, just the notification process. You know, Hudson is closer probably to Bridgeport Valentine in size. We're planning on getting after the whole community at once. So we'll drop a postcard letting all your citizens know that construction is beginning. And if there's any directional bore work, we'll be door-tagging, making sure those folks know what's going on in your community. And we definitely want to partner with the community in terms of strategic communication. Our marketing team wants to be right side by side, make sure that if there is any issues, they're not calling the city team, but they're calling the ALO team, and we can get it taken care of quickly. We pride ourselves on our restoration and our, again, exceptional customer service. We see every house that we pass with the fiber as a potential customer. We're really looking forward to working with Hudson. And with that, I will turn it over to Allison.
Thanks, Todd. You know, the second that ALO starts constructing in Hudson, you will start to get contacts from people in your community, and so will we, about all those ALO vehicles and what they're doing. And I live in Imperial, which is very similar in size to Hudson, and I can tell you that that starts immediately. So I really want to talk about the customer service, which really does begin, you know, at the time that we start the construction process. So Dave, if you want to move to the next slide. Not every company utilizes net promoter score, so let me explain it just a little bit. What we do is we survey our customers multiple times. We survey them annually to find out how things are going for them. We also survey them, you know, after their installation and after they receive their first bill. And the question that we're asking them is up in the top right, which says, how likely are you to recommend to a friend? So how likely are you to recommend ALO to somebody else? And, you know, through those, they can give an answer between a zero to a 10. And if they give us a nine or a 10, we get a point. And if they give us a zero to a six, we get a negative point. And net promoter score is on the range of negative 100 to positive 100. And unlike a test score, a zero is actually good, because it says you're, you know, you're even as far as people that like you and people that don't like you or wouldn't recommend you. But if you see ALO's score, we're at a 65. And for comparison, you know, I wanted to put on here the competitors that we interact with a lot in our communities and what their scores are. And so I'm certain that with, you know, your current providers, you likely get comments from your residents that maybe they're difficult to work with or difficult to contact. So, you know, with ALO, not only is it a great product, but the customer service is a piece that residents really appreciate. Move to the next slide. The core value of local is another part, you know, that just sets us apart from our competitors. And not only is it just being a part of your community, but it's also promoting that within our employees, you know, volunteering within the community, being a part of the local events and giving back. So when it comes to volunteerism or supporting hours that maybe our local employees want to volunteer within your community, we support that. And, you know, you can see from these pictures that we're a group that likes to get together. And so we use that within the community, too, to be a part of it. So in the top left, that was kind of our Lincoln, one of the first pictures that we took of our Lincoln employees. And the rest of them are just certain events that we've done throughout our communities. Dave talked about this a little bit, but, you know, one of the things that you guys probably see in advertising from telecommunications companies is you'll receive some sort of brochure that says that internet is $29.99, or that phone service is $15.99, $9.99. You order the service, you get the bill, and then when you see the after-tax, it's completely different than what you were expecting. We want to be better than that. And so this right here is a screenshot just straight from our website. And you're welcome to go to our website. And, you know, Fort Morgan would be a great example for you to look through and see what pricing looks like and what that looks like to your residents and to yourselves when you're interested in our service. And so over on the right-hand side, you could see at the very bottom where it says $165, that's actually the amount that you would see on your bill. So we try to make sure that when people are selecting service from us, they understand exactly what they're getting and what they will be paying for. And after you go through the process, you know, for example, if you're ordering online, you know, after you go through that process, you get a confirmation email with that same information that you can always reference back to. So being honest in pricing is a way that we like to differ. This slide is just showing all the ways that individuals can contact us. And, you know, through phone, chat, email, they can interact with us through our website, through social media. So something that I was surprised, you know, is how many people will report questions or report maybe service issues through Facebook, you know, through our social media sites, and then also through local events that we have, people coming up and asking us questions or communicating with us is another way that people reach out to us. And what that has to do with honesty, you know, a community your size is probably going to contact us about 50 to 100 times a week. And, you know, we don't have scripts. We ask our employees to be very honest with the people that are calling in. If there's an issue and it's on our side, we're going to admit that and do what we can to resolve it. So we have a lot of interaction with your community. We build trust quickly and have always received positive response to just the transparency that we have as far as, you know, possibly issues or concerns that the residents have. This slide is just another example of communication that we have, you know, with the residents. And the construction steps, for example, can be confusing for residents to just understand, okay, what happens next? And so we try to be hassle-free and help people out and understand all of the steps so they can go to our website and read through, you know, what exactly is happening, why are we in their backyard or in their neighborhood, you know, what is ALO? You know, what is ALO doing? Um instead of making them guess to it, um they can they can go and get information straight from our website. So with hassle-free, you know, we've we've tried to say what will make it best for the customer, for that business or residential customer. And with our quick, efficient customer service, you know, you could see how many ways someone could reach out to us and contact us if they wanted to. The other thing, you know, many times if you're calling for support, number one, you could get um maybe a a chat bot that's going to try to lead you through a process, um or you may have to press a button seven different times to get to someone, you know, that to talk to when you really just want to talk to someone as quickly as possible. And so you know, when when you call into us, you're very quickly going to get to a live person that can help you um solve solve the issue that you're having or answer any questions that you have. We also offer um local support uh 24 by 7 and you know, we don't outsource, you know, our after-hours any time of day. We do all of that locally through um employees that we have. So that technical support group, which is our second tier of support, if you call in at 3 o'clock in the morning, there's someone local that can help you, which our employees are our customers appreciate, you know, that they can get someone that truly understands uh what's going on with their service and and can help them. My last item on here, oh, I had one more item, that's my Dave, um is, you know, we don't, when if we're scheduling an installation for you, we don't say, hey, why don't you stay home from 8 to noon this morning and we will show up at some point during that time? Um we say, your appointment is for 8 o'clock and then we ask that people allow 30 minutes for the technician to arrive. So between 8 and 8:30, that technician is going to show up on your doorstep or you're going to receive contact from us explaining, you know, why we're late. But we do not um do blocks of of time with windows uh because we know that your time is is important and we want to make sure that that we're cognizant of that and doing the best that we can to arrive when we say we'll be there. Any questions for me?
Um yes, are you the main contact for the uh to participate with the community?
No, so the community participation and by that, do you mean if there is an event that you maybe want ALO to be a part of? Is that the question?
Yes.
Yes, so we have a marketing director, that's the main point of contact, and we can get you her information.
Okay.
But you could always, you know, I'm on this list, you could always send me the the email and I can get you her contact information, that'd probably be easiest for you.
Thank you.
So I know we covered a lot, may it seems maybe like a lot. We are happy to review anything or go a little deeper if you have specific questions. We've got pretty much the whole team here, so any one of us could answer any maybe more specific questions that anyone might have.
As you've been going around town, do you have an idea, once all the contracts are signed, how long it'll take you to get everything put into place?
We are hoping that if we can get started um in in June, that we'll have uh hopefully everything, the majority of the community constructed before Halloween. Um you know, worst case would maybe be Thanksgiving, and I guess if things just really go horribly wrong, uh we're looking at Christmas, but I really don't think it'll take that long.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for?
We were supposed to have Nate Wolowitz from the state, um it looks like he was not able to make this meeting. You guys have spoken to Nate before? Any other questions? Our goal is to get these documents uh for your approval in front of you as soon as we can. We're hoping next meeting, no guarantees, but we think we're aiming that direction. We just got their uh comments back today, so we're looking at them, but we're very, very, very close in ducking, so I think we're we're going to be a we can get this thing If there's no more questions or comments or anybody online, I guess reds are on. That's what we have for you.
Well, and and if anybody does afterwards, Guy, you know how to get in touch with us and you know, we'll we'll get the answers back. Maybe, you know, you need some time to to let it settle and that's totally fine. So we're happy to do that as well.
Okay, very good.
Thanks everyone so much. Look forward to seeing you in person soon.
Hello, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Looking forward to adding Hudson to the team. Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay, item number two, the consent agenda. If nobody has any questions, I would entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Stadler?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Mestus?
Yes.
Councilmember Knopf?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammack?
Yes.
Mayor Harges?
Yes.
Item 3A, request to fund college for kids program.
Thank you. Uh this is something that uh we're going through the rec committee. You guys did set aside $3,000 for donations. Um and we are looking for you to take $375 of that um to underwrite this college for kids program. We decided to take it out of that one instead of the larger programming amount for the entire town. But it would be to uh let's see, send 15 kids, I believe, uh to a one-week um look at college and we're actually fairly excited about it.
So it's a program that um the college in Front Range uh is hosting for kids. They do it every year. Um it'll be in June 21st to the 24th for ages nine to 15 with the program, a leadership program for kids for 13 to 15. It's usually $75. Uh Sophia reached out to them and they said we can do, we can have it at $25 a child instead. And so we decided maybe to cover that cost so we can give kids more of an opportunity to join it.
Yeah.
And I read that you guys are going to offer a discounted rate of 25 per kid for an additional 15. That's what it says here in the slideshow.
Offer a discounted rate of $25 per kid for up to additional 15.
Provide 15 secured spots for Hudson kids.
Yep.
Cover the cost of those and then offer a discounted rate of 25 per kid for up to an additional 15 who register independently using the town's discount code.
Yep.
And then you guys are taking them in the van. Says include transportation for the 15 secured spots using the soon-to-be-purchased community van. Would that include the other 15 that paid the discounted rate or no?
I don't think we can get them all in there at one time. That would we can make two trips.
So only the original 15? And how would you go about picking those 15 students?
Just register.
First come, first served.
Yep, okay. They'll be all day from 8:30 to 4:00. Lunch provided for the kids in the leadership program for the 13 to 15-year-olds.
You said the kids are selected on a first-come, first-served basis?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Do we know when we're getting the community van?
Uh we are, I don't know about that one.
Uh I passed on the information to our new rec director.
And we're circling it, we should be getting it in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, because I just feel like if something happens and we don't get it, I don't feel like we can put in the thing to include transportation. So I think maybe we could take that out for now until we really have it, because I mean things do come up and it's in June and you might not have a van by the end of June.
Yep.
And then some parents that find their kids up expecting transportation and they don't have it, things could, yeah.
Could you look into how much it costs to rent a uh transport service?
Yep.
And if something comes up, we can't get the van, let's see about covering that if nothing else, because there's probably a lot of kids in town that would benefit by this program, that their parents cannot take them.
That's what I'm thinking too, and if you put it in there that we, you know, it will be transported and we don't have the van even right now, I'm just, I just don't want people to get upset.
Well, and then you can include the additional children as well.
Yeah, if we can get a big enough one, we can include.
I could see where that could come in.
Any extras that actually sign up. But just get a price.
We'll do.
Yes. So it's the usually rent the bus and the driver together if we have to do that. Uh if we have our own van, we'll have our own driver, I believe, but I'm not sure how that goes.
15? And then we have a good license for that?
No.
16, isn't it?
I what we're getting, we don't need a license for, and I think we're at 14 seats.
Okay, 14.
Yeah, because we had to make some, we're having to make some modifications for ADA.
For handicap, yeah. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the request of fund college for kids program.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Stadler?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammack?
Yes.
Councilmember Mestus?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Knopf?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Harges?
Yes.
3B, ordinance 2105, ordinance amending chapter 13, article 2 of the Hudson Municipal Code relating to the delinquent water and wastewater accounts, second reading.
Thank you. This is second reading. This was brought to you two weeks ago. There were no amendments during the first reading. Um this is to um the ordinance will set a specific parameters um that they have to pay 10% of the past due amount and what is currently due to keep their water service on. We will also be making a very big effort to inform the citizens of this new policy so that we're not catching anybody's surprise. We're waiting to do a mailer right now. We're going to put it out in the newsletter, put it on the website, so and then uh we'll start enforcing it after it gets passed.
If there are no more questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 21-05 and ordinance amending chapter 13, article 2 of the Hudson Municipal Code relating to delinquent water and wastewater accounts, second reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 3C, ordinance 2106 and ordinance repealing chapter 2, article 16 of the Hudson Municipal Code to eliminate the Hudson Sanitation Board, second reading.
Thank you. There were no amendments at first reading and again, to summarize, this is to remove a board that no longer is necessary in your town.
No further questions, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2106 and ordinance repealing chapter 2, article 16 of the Hudson Municipal Code to eliminate the Hudson Sanitation Board, second reading.
A second?
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 3D, ordinance 2107 and ordinance amending chapter 13, article 4 of the Hudson Municipal Code relating to the time of raw water dedication, second reading.
And to summarize, this is moving the time when water dedications are due from annexation to final plat. There were no amendments on first reading.
If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 21-07 and ordinance amending chapter 13, article 4 of the Hudson Municipal Code relating to the time of raw water dedication, second reading. Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Staff reports, Guy.
Uh I really don't have much. Um I've spent a lot of time on broadband, so that's where my concentration has been. Um still waiting from CDOT and the railroad as to when they are going to close that down for three days and do the work on it. It's supposed to be started already.
They'll get notice the day they close it down.
We'll all get noticed the day they close it down.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Okay. Hillary, welcome back. Charity? Nothing. Hunter?
It's been raining a lot, so we're kind of playing in the mud. Really don't have much to add. We've been playing in the mud because of the rain. Haven't been able to get to a lot of projects because, yeah, we keep getting everything stuck.
Did you check that uh where the Holly Street is sinking?
Yeah, I looked at it. Um I'm I'm thinking it's a subgrade issue, but we'll look at it a little more when it dries out, see if if the asphalt changes when it dries out. Sometimes as it dries, it'll heave up.
It's been like that for a while.
So I'm guessing it's probably due to subgrade when they actually paved the road and there was a soft spot there, but we'll keep an eye on it now. We did clean the uh two crossings today.
I saw that, thank you.
And about got the backhoe stuck.
Imagine that.
Right. So, yep, um water pump station, right now, we're just waiting on getting internet. Once we have internet, we can have alarms, then we can switch over. Right now, we're running the pumps and the drives as they would, but we're still using the tank. So it's it's doing what it should be doing, but not quite.
We're not waiting for fiber out there to get this up and running, are we?
No, no. We're wait, uh Rogan's going to come out there very backed up with all the new homes in Keansburg and everything coming in.
Do we know how long that's going to take?
Um probably two to three weeks is what I'm hearing.
That was, two weeks ago was two weeks.
Well, that took me a week just to get a call back.
Okay.
And that's when their system was crashing everywhere left and right. Um we really don't have many other options for internet right now. I am waiting, uh I talked to the company who put in the computer system to see if I could run it off of a mobile hotspot, so they're looking at that, you know, if we could just plug one in and keep it charged. Those tend to drop off though, so we're a little leery of doing that.
What about RISE?
Uh we can look into it. I know a lot of people in this area have issues with it dropping out.
Don't have any.
There's people in our neighborhood that haven't had internet for a couple of weeks.
See, we've got it, we have, we've got it, internet.
Mine's working, but other people's is not.
Right.
When I called RISE, the technician came and said, do not install this.
Yeah.
Because it's too slow.
That's what the CenturyLink people say too.
Really?
Yeah. Oh, I was told that by the CenturyLink guy when they brought my second router after the first one failed.
So I kind of feel.
They'll give you a discount, though.
We actually have high speed with RISE.
We're best off right now just to wait for Rogan to come in and install. Then they told me if they get it quick.
As long as we're not raiding for ALO.
No. They they should be, you know, if they get an opening, they know I'm pushed for time, so they're going to try and get us in earlier if they can.
But you said the pumps are operating, right?
Yeah, pumps are all operating, everything. We're just, instead of using a pressure sent point in the pipelines, we're using the pressure of the elevated tank to tell it when to run and when to shut off. So it's doing exactly what it's supposed to, but we're at a lower pressure. If I tried to bump it, we'd have water all over Sarah's neighborhood.
That'd be fun.
It is in the summer, kids would enjoy it.
Okay, anything else for Hunter?
Um the basketball court lights.
They're all up and running, so um well, the lights that haven't been broken out of it are up and running. Uh we have a lift coming next week, so we can just start changing light bulbs. We need to put in 15 light bulbs between baseball and basketball and had to rent a 70-foot lift to do it. So then draw straws, who's going to go up in the lift because it's not me.
And I noticed um after one of the real heavy wet snows, it looks like there's a middle of the basketball court has sunk a bit because there was a puddle in the middle.
That's actually been there since we paved it.
Okay.
You know, we we knew going into the paving of it, it was a temporary, give us a couple of years and that's what we're going to get out of it. We're going to have to make the decision. Honestly, the basketball court should be completely moved from the bottom of the park and put at a higher location. So that's something y'all will be working with with the rec department on, you know, as we model that park, where do we put stuff that will survive?
And if I remember correctly, when we resurfaced that, we actually worked on the drainage on the west side.
Yeah.
To try to help.
Yeah.
And so it's really wet down there.
Yeah.
Hence, pawn number two.
Yeah, it's back. It's smaller, but it's back.
Okay.
No, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
And then Jay's online.
Well, um I don't have anything.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Jay or Jen? Nope? No? All right, Daniel?
Dana.
Candace?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Oh. Maria?
So we're going to have a rec meeting. Sophia's been working really hard, so she's amazing, getting some stuff together. We invited some community members, leaders from the school. Anyway, it's going to be on the 11th. And it's going to be, it's going to be a really important meeting. So I'd recommend if you guys get a chance to come down. We're going to be talking about park equipment, events, of course, the updated for the college for kids, trying to get the open gym again. And then we're getting a new volunteer program. And we need two new, we need two community members to join as well. So anybody's, May 11th, yep, 6:00 PM.
Here.